Hi, I'm Chris Riley from 25th and 21st Road. When I came three years ago to the United States, but I got a couple now. Are we going to have to issue any more debt for, as I call it, their bonds to help them? I know they've got sewers and company, power water up there. Are we going to have to issue any debt to help them build?
No.
Okay. Then another question would be, what are we going to do once it does go through? How are we going to refinance the three-year bonds that we took out to help us continue to pay what we've been doing in a losing cause because we didn't have enough oversight to watch the guy stealing from us? The country club, I mean, the guy who's running the country club. So those are just my two questions on that.
Considering the bond question, we currently have notes, we're issuing notes at the moment. They're annual notes and the rate is about 0.6%. And the plan is to issue bonds for either the $7 million or the $4.8 million, whatever figure would happen to be, at some point in the near future.
Long-term, short-term?
Well, we can issue notes up to 10 years, but the issue is at the end of the third year, which is coming up in August of 2012, you're required to pay 1/20 of your principal. So what happens is you continue, if that's the way you choose, to issue notes. So that means that on an annual basis, the interest rate changes. So it's a short-term interest rate that you have to keep changing as opposed to issuing bonds, which is set, the interest rate is set over a 20-year period. So that's sort of how the cash flow works there. We still have to continue paying out the debt starting this August.
Well, when you hear that, when they take over, how long will it be? I'm sorry. How long is it going to be before we actually see revenue besides the 1/20 million in taxes?
Oh, okay, I can change this line on that.
Oh, no, that's okay.
It's about three, four, it's about three, four years. Depends on how.
Again, going back to it, not again, it is just, I'm worried about, we have the country club land, that we owe a lot of money.
Right.
We're not making very much money from the golf course. And that our bonds are going to be floating now, as you say.
Right.
No interest rate by now. So how in the next three years or four years before a half a million dollars or whatever comes in, are we going to be able to afford that?
What will happen is in the next three or four years, there's going to be, there's going to be a negative cash flow there where that'll have to be paid for, you probably have a budget or there's any revenues from the course, of the revenues from the golf course. It just sort of depends on the cash flow of the course versus whether or not President Fox.
Hi, Anthony Shaker, One Over Hill Road, Woodbridge, Connecticut. I was actually on the board of finance at the time when we purchased the country club a few years ago. And as I do recall, we did vote on the purchase. We did understand that. Probably a few years after, we would have to make some decisions, some hard decisions about how we were going to finance the club on a long-term basis. And of course, one of the options that was talked about was partial development, slow development with the age restriction that we're talking about now. So what is being proposed now, as I see it, is not anything new. It's something I think was always a part of the plan at the very beginning and is consistent, I think, always with how we were going to be able to purchase this property. We were very fortunate to be able to take the country league golf course and be able to preserve it. I see this development actually as a way that we can intuit, maintain this golf course as a golf course and as open space. And I just want to reiterate, just, I think as you said tonight, that obviously the revenue we receive from this project is very important to the town. We have a lot of projects that are coming up, the school, public works, fire department, there are plenty of needs. And if there is a cost, if we do decide not to afford this plan, there is going to be a cost to the town, significant costs to, again, to maintain the bonds on this property, to affect our bond rating also, and affect our ability to really bond out a school project or a public works project. So I very much understand there are many concerns with this project. And it's also, I also look at this as sort of the beginning of the project, not really the end of the project. It had a lot of approvals that needed to go through, a lot of public approvals. So a lot of the concerns I'm hearing tonight, I think there will still be an opportunity to force those concerns, make sure that this project is done correctly and keeping it in town at Woodbridge. I just, again, want to say in favor of us being present.
Michael Broder, Bywell, St. Rose. I want to just say a bunch of quick things and I have a couple of questions asked as well. First of all, as we've been discussing, the approval process, as Attorney Credo went through, was very complicated for certain reasons. We have to change the plan of conservation and development. We have to change the planning of zoning regulations. All those things were put in place for a reason. It's not, and the idea of having willy-nilly zoning where we just put age-restricted developments around town is exactly what Woodbridge has always stood against. And that's how our town has developed over the years. So, you know, the idea, you made it sound so easy. Well, it's not so easy for certain reasons. We only have one age-restricted zone. And that was set forth for certain reasons. There is public water, there's public sewer, there's public transportation there. That area does not have public transportation. So it doesn't go even with kind of the idea of having a senior population living there. And this idea is the most radical proposal that has ever occurred in the town of Woodbridge, proposed by the town since I've lived here. Because it goes absolutely against our residential zone A, which is what we hold in high esteem in the town, who gives us the lifestyle that everyone, or most people at least, have moved to the town for. And I'm just so disappointed that the town leaders don't get it and are wasting our time because there are lots of other possibilities to find the town needs. And it's also wrong because we're doing it at the wrong time on top of it. We're doing it in a market that is the most depressed since the Great Depression. Attorney Wyner, you know, told us how great the deal was. Well, Attorney Wyner, you know, you're not thinking about the future. I mean, land prices have taken in Woodbridge probably a 20% hit. So, you know, we don't know what the future will yield for this property and what the town can get. And we don't want to be reactionary, which is how this board seems to have been reacting in their proposals about the debt and about the country club situation. And if we gave ourselves more time, more study, and we scrapped this proposal, the whole town would be better off. On top of it, it allows zoning precedent that has never occurred. Are we going to have, for instance, now development with big sewer lines that are going to support this facility brought up? Okay, so some of these homes in that area are torn down and parcel opens up. Maybe then we'll have the ability to have multifamily housing or low-cost housing right in that same area as well. And towns know, I mean, you can read the New York Times, the area, Connecticut just lost a case because, and Woodbridge falls way under the portable housing standard. So if you create situations to build a portable housing, which puts sewer lines and larger water lines in, we have opportunity to have further problems to our plan of conservation and development that people never thought about. And this is why this reactionary plan, this quite radical, is really, really a bad idea for the town. And I hope, you know, the town people think of all the further implications that this could do. It sounds great on the surface, all the alleviating a little bit of debt, but there are going to be ramifications for the whole town's plan if this does go through.
I'm Dan Cummingsburg of the Ciclos Drive, and I will keep this brief. I've lived in Woodbridge about 35 years. My wife grew up here, in town with her family. And I recall going to one or two of the meetings when Woodbridge Country Club was closing and listening to, I believe there were at least two developers who were talking about building on the property and putting up what essentially sounded like portable housing. Now, portable housing is the thing in principle. Question is, you know, where should it be and how would that affect the town, where it's situated and so forth and so on. But nevertheless, that's what it would have been. And had that gone forward, we wouldn't be here today having this discussion. To my surprise, the town that stepped in and said, you know, we would consider taking this over, it'd be nice to have some recreational land to store the town, we'd like to preserve this open space. And by the way, down the road, we may have to sell off some of it. I do remember in the corner of my brain somewhere hearing that we may have to sell off some of it to support that debt. And I thought, that sounds like a pretty good deal to me. That sounds reasonable and it made sense. And I thought the board was acting in good faith and that they showed good judgment in doing that. Now, here's part two. We live in an old brother's home in Woodbridge, which we bought as new construction. And I'd be less than candid to say it was a perfectly smooth process. But here we are nine years later. We're happy where we are. There are no major problems. There were no problems with the house. Seems to be working just fine and can't speak for our neighbors, but don't have any complaints on that score. That being said, when I first heard this proposal, I was skeptical. I said, you know, what about, do we really have to sell the land? So maybe they'll just have to eventually raise taxes a little and we can preserve the open land. Why even do this? There's all the issues of the economy, the housing market is down, there are safety concerns, et cetera, et cetera. But as I learned more about the proposal and as I read about it and talked with folks, I did see where there was a disadvantage in having age-restricted housing that some people in Woodbridge had been wishing for for a good while, who have lived here all these years, that would defer a little of the town's resources as far as police and fire and certainly education. And in the interest of full disclosure, I was on the Board of Education in the 1980s, where I recall about two-thirds of the town budget went for education. And so when I see that down the road, there could be a modest surplus and that there are capital needs for education in this town, the very thing that is said to enhance the town's value, the type of real estate itself, to me, that started to sound like a decent proposal. Last thing I'll say is that I'm a physician and so by training, one learns to think, weighing the pros and cons, problem-solving. And when I weigh the pros and cons of all this, and there are certainly cons, it would be to anything, and I understand the safety and other concerns, but I ask myself, would I rather pay more taxes down the road for legitimate reasons or have the town sell this property in a way that has only modest environmental and resource impact? I'd come down on the side of the proposal. It seems to me the better way to do it. We could wait here, five years, maybe the market will come back, maybe it won't, maybe we'll make a few more dollars in the process. That to me is like not selling all your profit in that stock because it could go up a little more in the future. The burden they end seems to be to make the most sense there. And last thing I'll say is that my impression from afar is that this is not a casual decision on the part of the board of selection, that they studied this, they had committees and subcommittees. And I did reach out to one or two of the committee people to just learn more about it because I was very skeptical. And I think it's been done in an organized and solid way and so that on balance, I'm perfectly comfortable with the proposal and I will vote for it.
Matthew Giglietti, Horton, Bremer Road. Of course, I'm the chairman of the Board of Finance. I think when we got the approval of the town to buy the country club, which was released in, I think, most of the people in the town because of the potential development, that would have been known there had we not bought it. I think our intention immediately upon meeting to decide what we're going to do with the club would be to find somebody to take over the operation of the club and keep it revenue-neutral so that the taxpayers wouldn't be burdened of any additional taxes. And for the first two and a half years, I think we accomplished that. We hired an operator who ran the club, we had the club running, probably within a month and a half after we closed on it, which was a remarkable accomplishment. And throughout the entire process of negotiating with him over the two and a half to three years, again, our plan was always to have an operator take it over. At one point in time, we thought we had a plan in place where we would do a long-term purchase with him, as there would be no cost whatsoever to taxpayers, which was widely received by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. Unfortunately, legality has caused that not to be possible. Once we realized that we weren't going to be able to cover the expenses of this club with an independent operator, the 17 acres, which is basically an unused portion of the property, it's mostly rock from what I can understand, that seemed to be a viable piece of property to be developed without impacting the golf course at all. And again, as Ed said, I sat next to him at that meeting at the Torrey when he said we might have to do some development. Again, once we realized that there wasn't going to be any possibility of running that facility, I really, I have a problem calling it open space. It's a major facility. We have a clubhouse here that has some major needs. We have a golf course. Anybody who knows anything about golf courses, very expensive to run, green stairways, sand traps, sprinkler systems, things can go wrong and expenses can skyrocket. We realized, and I'm probably one of the few proponents of this, in order to keep this reasonable for taxpayers, we need some kind of a renovation. And I believe everybody on the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and in town would much rather see it not be developed. But the reality is, if we don't do something to get any income stream, the impact on taxes will be, in my opinion, astronomical. We have the entire debt service, which Tony presented to you. We would immediately have to have $600,000 for our budget in the first year to cover that debt service. And we still haven't addressed the possible monies we'd have to come up with from operating expenditures and capital expenditures because, again, the building there is in dire need of repairs. So obviously, while this isn't the most desirable thing, it's something that's going to accomplish exactly what we told the taxpayer that we bought it, and that was, we weren't going to ask them to come up with any significant amount of taxes. So again, if we were to add this to the budget, I would insist, and I know the members of the Board of Finance are going to insist, that we also have a proponent component there for operating expenses and capital. So in addition to the $600,000, we're going to have additional monies in our budget to operate the club. I believe that, again, this takes the burden off the taxpayers. I've heard arguments about this Woodbridge Village District and how this is really what the town needs. This is 17 acres. The Woodbridge Village is 15 acres and they propose building close to 150 units. We've heard complaints that these aren't going to be on one level, they're going to be, these are all on one level, nobody has to be climbing the stairs. If you're going to build 150 units on 15 acres, they are going to be single garage, three-story buildings, and I don't think that fits the needs of age-restricted housing. I was also approached at the last meeting and I was told, why don't we sell the remaining acreage? Let's use the figure Mr. Wyner suggested, $3 million. We could then use the property taxes that we previously lost to pay the debts with this. We were previously receiving about $160,000 a year from the Woodbridge Country Club based on that assessment. If this property were sold for $3 million and we assess it 70%, that would be 2.1 million. At our mill rate, that would generate about $60,000 a year in taxes, not 160,000. So we couldn't even pay the interest on the bond we should sell. I believe the Board of Selectmen are doing exactly what they are empowered to do. They have a proposal. We all believe that this proposal will solidify Anthony's view of the town, but they've brought to a referendum. The townspeople will vote and they will decide whether or not, one, they want their taxes to increase significantly by voting yes, or have a revenue-neutral proposition by voting yes. And we're going to find that out on December 30th. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherry DuKai. I live on 94 Center Road and I have two thoughts. The first is, being a person who appreciates open space as much as I do, that the park isn't development, isn't golf course, of course, though I don't own this piece of land, it's probably equally or more important than the golf course portion. I don't know that per se, sure. The other part is, I appreciate all of you in Board of Finance, on Board of Selectmen, volunteers, in doing such. I'm also on the weapons and something I heard concerned me. And that was, and I may have misunderstood, but if this is going to a referendum, it's just some of the languaging, that if the TPC or the weapons decides that instead of 54 units, we can only have 48 units, then it alleviates toll brothers of the deal that they're proposing. And I just know as a person who's called weapons, we are really going to seriously consider this piece of land and what it can sustain. And I feel like that's some sort of undue pressure to put it to you, if we have to agree to the 54. That's, if I understand, that, I just want to understand that it's giving the weapons the space it needs to do the job that it's going to do.
I believe the town, the Board of Selectmen would expect the incoming weapons, PNC, CDH to do exactly what they have always done, lucrative, independent, carefully analyze it, come up with investment prudent, no preconceived mandate.
Was it, if something said that unless it's 54, was it something said that unless all 54 units are approved, then?
If it's under, if you approve under 50, you have every right to hold it. Then they're making their decision, could say this is not going to be economically viable and they will not proceed what we have lost at that point in the process of trying to get us to the end.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're being boxy. Is that given?
No, absolutely, and just the opposite. We would expect you to make sure you do a reasoned, careful analysis of the proposal.
Thanks.
I just want to say one thing because Dr. Broder mentioned that this is a radical proposal. And we have not had this kind of housing before. But this radical proposal is accepted and common in Madison, York City, Guilford, East City, Park, Waltham, for every single town in our community, in our region, has accepted this kind of housing. And as far, as far as I can see, they've survived. And the reason they have accepted this kind of housing is because in this economic times, municipalities have to look at different creative ways to generate revenue. It is not the old days. This is 2011, we are under pressure to figure out how we can generate new revenue. Forty years in this town, we've been trying to look at new revenue. We don't have commercial, we don't have industrial, and we're happy to know this is one alternative residential ability to get some new revenue, which is the reason why other towns have adopted this proposal. So I don't believe it's radical. I think it's radical not yet.
I just want to respond.
I think in German.
Since you're responding to me. I think it is totally radical for Woodbridge. Norton Haven and those other towns have a very, very different character than our town has. If you read our town plan of conservation and development, which I don't know who has this, Wyner, it talks about our decollet countryside. It talks about people moving here for privacy and our large lots. We are a very different kind of community in zoning from all those communities you develop, or you cite. So I don't think that's a fair comparison. It's why, again, people have moved here. It is radical because you've never seen anything like this come from the Board of Selectmen ever before in a residential zone, residential A zone in our town. So it's radical in that nature and I hope, I absolutely stand up for that comment and I think you're just wrong about your assessment.
We're unique.
I'm Kennedy Woodin. I live at the corner of Woodbridge Road and on 10th Street and.
Straight to the other mic, we're calling to be talking to the mic.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. There have been three accidents in the past three years that ended up on my lawn. One fortunately that did not take out the propane tank. If it had, I would not have been here. But to me, I mean, just to say that you have, you would have to widen the road, move through the road and you will have to put in an additional sewer pipe down there because when I came to apply for the sewer permit 15 years ago, 16 years ago, they, I had the only person on the sewer permit besides the, besides the Woodbridge Country Club. I was the only one. They, they say they would likely have it, but they didn't know if it would cause problems because they had no proof of it. I asked you, you, so let it remain, if you had done research on this sewer line.
I'm Angela Preman, at Institute 3 Center Road. And there was a question at the last information session regarding enrollment at Future Road School. So I wanted to get back with you some specific numbers on that. And I think the question is asked about enrollment at Future because the town, in the plan of conservation and development proceeds, that education is very important and we need to be mindful of enrollment. And that is why this, as age-restricted housing, it's an important element of the proposal because it would allow us to collect tax records from homes that could not, and it's cool. So the question was asked, so if other people in the town were to sell their house and move in there, then their home would, bedrooms, and no restriction on how much education you have. So I wanted to let you know about the data from Future. We do this every year. We have a stat station looking at the county benefits of our town. He factors in the normal salary of, kind of, the. It factors in the normal salary of head of districts. You're also aware of how the townspeople, because of the very large number of our townspeople are over 1,000. So at Future, we had an all-time high of enrollment of just over 1,000 kids in 2001. In October 2007, it was down to 793 kids. Right now, today, it's 741. And the projections are coming out. Next year, 736. October 2013, we're expecting 719. October 2014, 709. And October 2015, 691. So depending on when the homes come up for sale, we're going down. We're going to be just about 700. We're stable. And we've been canceled. Obviously, we can handle up to 800. And we all want to handle fast, but it's been fluctuating, but it has been stable. The other comment that I just wanted to make, so that's my board event comment when I was managing the Woodbridge Board Event. And that is a report that the Selectmen have, and it's also available on our website, the Woodbridge Board Event website, if anyone wants to see the details, how that statistic puts those numbers together, because it's very accurate. The only other comment I'd like to make is, you know, I hear people ask me, "If this is the right time to sell, this is the best offer, should be waiting longer, should we look for a better offer?" And I did some just really rough calculations. My understanding is, we bought the acres, 150 acres, for roughly $7 million, 200 years ago. That's about $47,000 per acre, if you do that math. If we were to sell 17 acres for a net of $1.8 million, right, after the credit back, that comes out to $105,000 in debt that we're selling for. So that's, we're doubling, and we want to double what we get back. And I wonder, I'm curious, what other kind of work we could be getting, what we could entertain. But I do know, we have needs to do things like a renovation at Future. If we wait, the cost of renovating Future's gone up. So I'm hoping that we're going to come back and be doing the renovations for Future. I know bonding is at, you know, a very low cost right now. I think we should take that money and invest it in what we have, and we should renovate Future.
My name is Jeff G. Levine, Johnson Road. I've been a resident of Woodbridge for 15 years. But I think I have a quote of this, I've owned and operated a business in Wilton, Fairfield County, for 25 years, the Rockland Fairfield County. I'd just like to address a number of statements made by the people in front here. Specifically, when you refer to towns like Guilford, Pan, excuse me, Madison, and other towns in New Haven County, looking at projects and entering into projects that exist. Quite frankly, they're not selling off town land to do this. This is a radical-like idea, in my opinion. In a place like Wilton, and I've worked there, paid taxes there through my business for quite some time, those communities are quite serious about acquiring any kind of ownership. They would never, ever allow something like this to happen. What it does, in fact, is it sets a precedent for large companies like the Toll Brothers, who can employ very, very sophisticated legal apparatuses and basically make a town back down. This happened in Wilton. There was a quite big project that the town was dead-set against. They had voted against it, but through a series of legal maneuvers, Derek was put in a series of commitments. I followed this quite closely. He was reported in newspapers. So you may feel that selling something like this, this is a one-time deal, this will be a great economic boom to our town. I disagree. And quite frankly, there's a lot of that in the back of my mind. I have a good friend of mine, his term just expired, was the head of the planning committee in Danbury. They have completely searched out land. Towns like Derek and Pan are land poor. They're dying, they're put to buy any kind of property. They're hardcore. There's all sorts of... You see the kinds of things that happen in rent, lawsuits, or they're not allowed to be able to use land. That's the point. I don't want to go too far afield, but the fact of the matter is that I think it's the wrong direction to be selling off this land. Frankly, I believe one of the gentlemen said that this would raise our taxes. I have a neighbor here said it would raise our taxes by $200. I'm certainly more than willing to pay $200 to keep the kind of town that we have here. If you would like to see the way that we're headed, just look at Derek's country. It's totally developed, every single bit of land. They tear down houses left and right. There's lots of people with lots of money that are wanting to create it. We are very lucky to be protected from that kind of pressure, constant developmental pressure. And if you don't think it's not going to come here, I believe you're wrong. I'd just like to say, frankly, there's two other things, and I have a quote here for them. You can't replace your mistakes. Franklin said a long time ago, or Delk said, "I can always make another sandwich with lots of food, but you can't make more land." And frankly, I'd like to just add that, one of the meetings that I attended in Danbury, there was a citizen there quoted an old carpenter saying, "Measure twice, cut once." So I believe that we should look at this proposal much, much more closely, much more seriously. Because another saying is, "I'd rather be skeptical early on than cynical later on." And quite skeptical, I see everybody agreeing with such a great project, which will actually only generate very little in the way of money, and it won't be very much money out of it. Thank you.
I want to give a moment to the gentleman's mention of open space, just to let you know that the town of Woodbridge owns an excess of 1,000 acres of open space.
Hi, I'm Carrie. I'm a firm accountant at Woodbridge. Since the town was purchased with the Country Club of Woodbridge, the real estate margin has drastically changed. For example, four years ago in 2007, the average sale price of a home in our town was about $580,000. Today, that price has dropped to $436,000. This overall decline in property value holds true for the Country Club as well. Although the values of the Country Club and the prices to the town residents, private Country Clubs are closing and are not in demand. That luxurious lifestyle is over. In the past, Woodbridge has had a very successful experience with Toll Brothers. They create an upscale neighborhood of 21 homes with upscale prices while increasing the tax base for the town. They now have a proposal to purchase a small piece of marginal land, 17 acres, for $2 million, which would reduce our $7 million mortgage to $5 million, and the new housing would increase the tax base. Most importantly, it would provide our senior citizens, and you only need to be 55 to be senior, an alternative to moving out of town, which has been an outgoing flight to Grantford, Hammond, and Chester, and Oxford. A good percentage of their homes, and there's about a third of them in town, are always on the market. So whether we develop this property or not, these seniors are going to vouch. It would be nice for us to have an opportunity for them sustaining our town. A two-story home that was perfect for their young family just doesn't work anymore. As a Realtor in town for over 35 years, I don't feel that the building of a senior complex will adversely affect the existing home prices we have. Rather, it could actually act as a catalyst for grant families to relocate nearby grandchildren. I am speaking as a taxpayer and a senior citizen. I think we should seriously consider this opportunity. Tollbrothers have deep pockets and have proven that they will make the project work. This economy makes it very difficult to find other qualified buyers who can afford this project. Selling 17 acres of marginal land for $2 million helps us reduce the price we were forced to pay for the land. I don't foresee an opportunity like this in the near future. I think we should strive while we're at it. I don't pretend that this piece would worth any more money in the future than it is today. We have a bonfire offer on the table. Couldn't we all be winners tonight? We see selling this land is a small price to pay to continue to protect the decollet lifestyle we have come to enjoy in Woodbridge.
I'm Richard Porcellini, 1101 Brook Road. And I personally have significant investment in the open spaces in this town. I've worked tirelessly to save many acres that we now do enjoy in this open space. Yet I'm absolutely astounded at this proposal. I believe it's been extremely arbitrary. As a businessperson, I've asked this Board of Selectmen in the past for factor analysis, positive and negative, what are the factors considered? I don't believe that a long-term strategy was developed that this is a component of. And from that regard, I see it as arbitrary. And as Denise Rock said earlier, she believes it's a flawed deal. I don't just believe it's a flawed deal. It's a flawed process that brought us to this point. The significant issue before all of us here is really the zoning issue. And the concern that a municipality cannot create spot zoning, that once we allow this, it basically opens up the watershed for elsewhere within our community. That is my number-one concern here. And I was at the meeting in '09. I spoke in favor of acquiring the golf course property at the time. Yet never conceived of zoning changes for the property at that time. The thought was perhaps acre-and-a-half-type development. But I also agree that we've got to save any pieces of open space we have available. From my perspective, it just doesn't make sense. It disduces amongst our residents. We don't need any more division amongst us. I challenge the Board of Selectmen to show some courage and withdraw Mr. Cluntel. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Mazolo, 17 Brook Road. I have been a local home builder for about 30 years. I find it fascinating to be here in front of this group of people. Where now a landlord is the town. The town is offering land to be purchased with a developer. Fascinating. I'm just enthralled by it. Funny what would happen if I went in with a proposal of 55 units on 15 acres, what I can do. Anyways, if the proposal was built as it is shown, I think it's not a bad deal for the town. I have my doubts whether it will fulfill exactly the proposals that you're talking about. But if it is a bad deal, that's not a bad deal except for the people who front it. I think, I feel free. It's a question for the zoning and whether it makes sense to do that. My problem is that, as a local builder, I didn't know this proposal. I didn't read the commercial records. It's a small guy, probably wouldn't be able to bite this much off in his time. But maybe if I had some partners and some time to develop, maybe we could. Whether it's needed or wanted, it's a different story. But the other problem I have is that when we look at a project like this, and I compete every day with Toll Brothers, and it's, you know, it's like the local lumberyard trying to compete against Home Depot and Lowe's. And, you know, they have big money, they have resources. They come in and they purchase up big pieces of land. They change the market conditions for small guys. As you know, since Home Depot and Lowe's came in, we've lost Tim, Tom, Seymour Lumber, Stevenson Lumber. All of these companies hired local people. They were making good money. They were contributing back to the economy. They were sustaining the local economy. I'm not sure if Toll Brothers does that. They buy lumber from Pennsylvania, use big purchasing power. They don't sustain the local economy. That's the part that I am objectionable to. Besides the other issue, which I think the town has to sort through, but my main objection is probably the Toll Brothers. Thank you.
I come here as a physician, a retired Harold Stern, and Sonya Road. I've been driving by the area for 30 years.
What is your name?
I'm a visionary, Harold Stern. A visionary. I see to my left a tower. I see to my left a totally unbuildable area that really isn't a bad sight. And then I visualize land shaking and something nice to look up to. And that's why I'm really in favor of it. The golf courses are magnificent, of course. Westport has one. Maybe, like I say, North Haven is a desert course that I'm really in favor of.
James Rovano, 17 Brook Road. I wanted to... A member of the Conservation Commission, wanted to correct the record. It stated earlier that the Conservation Commission denied in 2010 unanimously voted to support carving out a piece of the Woodbridge Country Club for sale. It did not. That's taken out of context. The Conservation Commission understood that unless something was done to enhance the value of golf course, given how much the town overpaid for it, that it would be difficult to pay down $7 million of debt. The objective was to enhance the value of golf course. So it favored limited, very limited development, some 15 acres on the side of the golf course with the provision that the remaining 135 acres be protected with a conservation estimate. And that the entire course would be sold as one, so that a developer could decide where to put the housing or where to put whatever development he saw fit that would work to enhance the operation. So the objectives of the Conservation Commission was to sell the whole parcel to enhance its value, so that the town could get more money to pay down more debt, and to get the property back on the tax rolls. It understood that protecting another piece of open space sometimes would be impossible in the foreseeable future. I've heard say that that is a good deal to pay down $1.8 million of debt. I've heard that Jerry Wyer talked to Realtors and thought that the golf course apart from the 17 acres is worth $3 million. We know that the 17 acres that it will give value is 2 million acres. If you add the two together, that's a sale price to the entire piece of about $5 million. Paying down $5 million of debt is far more desirable than paying down $2 million of debt. It's irresponsible for the town not to pursue that option, concur to the number of options. We need to see what the market will bear. One of the golf course consultants that the town talked to at the time of getting appraisals, did the original appraisals for the Country Club, Jeff Dudes, did say this, that there is always the market for a good golf course. I don't accept what he said here unless we explore the possibility. We don't know what we can get for it and what we can get from it. And I don't think paying down only $2 million of debt is a good deal. I think it's a bad deal. We can do better. We need to consider, too, what this project, what effect this project will have on the Radley Road project. I think it's on the border for the towns, for representatives of the town, to be denigrating that project, knocking that project, stating that developers have no money, when that's not factual. It is not factual. I have a copy of a letter that the developers wrote to the town. And I think it's important that the townspeople understand the developer's sentiments.
What's the date of the letter?
The date of the letter is November 15, 2011.
Who's the developer?
They're called Woodbridge Village Associates. I'm not going to read the whole name. I'm not going to read the whole name. Pursuit of the Woodfield Road project could undermine the collaborative work undertaken by the Woodbridge Village developers and the town, which worked with the town for the past 12 years, several years to give it approval. My clients, this is a lawyer speaking, who is John Cuff, Hurwitz, Sagerritt, Slossburg, and Comfort, not professionals, I was pronounced. My clients urged the town and its voters carefully to consider the impact of the proposed contract on the approved Woodbridge Village development specifically. That this project may require my clients to reevaluate their options to the property. Now, consider that. What does that mean? Law would intend consequences. So this to the Toll Brothers, which has been allowed to phase this development, where the Woodbridge Village people were required to build it all at once, which is why they got started developing. But what if they changed or considered new options to the property that could hurt the town, could drain on services and additional expense? For me, I'd rather see a town that provides three, a development that provides three times the tax revenue that this development would provide. That allows the Woodbridge Country Club to remain protected open space with some very limited development. And that we respect the common plan of conservation development through which the Woodbridge Village project was fully funded over two years. Thank you.
Jim, I just want to respond to about the minutes of the Woodbridge Conservation Commission on May 20. And I'm going to read from it. It says, "Woodbridge Country Club update. Jim Vervano provided a summary of the Country Club of Woodbridge Liaison Committee meeting that was held on May 6, 2010, and discussed the RFP that the town is planning to issue." Mr. Vervano's notes are a pension minutes. "The Woodbridge Conservation Commission unanimously agreed to file: A. The stipulation in the RFP requiring the identification of pesticides, herbicides being used, and a plan to reduce their use. B. Inclusion in the RFP of solicitation of an offer to purchase as an alternative to leasing." And we did include that in our RFP in 2010, and we had no responses to anyone wanting to purchase that. And then C. Make a formal request with the Board of Selectmen to carve out the Johnson Road Woodfield parcel for appropriate development. That's what I read tonight, and that's what it says.
Woodfield, correct?
Yes.
It's on the Parkway side.
Johnson Road Woodfield parcel for appropriate development.
Not what we're looking at.
Jim, let me make something clear also. You talked about this project's development, Bradley Road. Everybody thinks there is great possibilities, and hopefully that happens. And I think I said before, I was in a meeting where they came, where the developer, their attorney came and said, "Because of the change in the economic climate, there is no bank that will give financing for the project away that has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission." And they said that they would come up with new plans and new proposals to do this. We welcome that, we hope it happens, and we don't believe it's inconsistent with the project at Woodfield. Again, they said, and it's further evidenced by the fact it's been three years and there hasn't been a shovel on the ground yet.
All I can say is that the developers were, in quotation, I quote, "They were rebuffed in their effort to obtain the right to phase the development as the Toll Brothers have here."
And I said, and I talked to the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, he said that they did not file a proposal. We welcome a proposal. They came for an informal meeting and they were told, "We welcome a new proposal to see if we can work with you to get this project moving." It was no rebuke, it was positive. And again, I spoke to the lawyer, and I said, "Come to us with another proposal." That's the facts and that's the truth.
Scott Jefferson, 425 Andy Road. I went back to the minutes of the Amazoning Commission on that particular issue, and they did turn the village district people down for a phase-in approach. Now, I have a question for the town council. This is what I'm in minutes, I'm sorry, if they didn't completely explain in minutes, that's what was on the internet. I have a question for the town council. If they turned down a phase approach of the village district project and Toll Brothers is allowed a phase-in approach, is the town open for litigation? Because that would be a question of a lot of money.
Keep in mind that the requirement that they build the entire project was done by the Town Planning and Zoning Commission four years ago, or three years ago, when they got commissioned. It was insisted by the members of the board that they do it all at once because I think, and I wasn't there and I wasn't at the town council, I think they were concerned about starting the project and not being able to complete it if things didn't go the way they planned. I would have to see a copy of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission that you just referenced because that is, I know they have not filed a formal application, so I can't understand how PNC can turn them out. So let me look at the minutes with you after this meeting and we can come to some conclusion.
Judy Cooper, 51, from Woodrod in Woodbridge. I'd like to focus on something else that hasn't been brought up here. The last time we were in an economic downturn for the real estate, 1989 to 1998, when we got past that phase, and then 2000, 2005, Woodbridge prices of homes did not rise like other towns did. And a lot of it had to do with our mill rate at that time. Right now, we're in a downturn. And who knows when it's going to be over, we talk to 2015, 2020. But whether it all is said and done, I don't see Woodbridge prices of homes going up. It has nothing to do with the downturn, it has to do with our mill rate. And whereas you said that it's $200 or $300 of each of these, so that we should enjoy this kind of life, you're adding it also to the increased mill rate that we already have that's going to go up. My mind and my heart are inquiring this proposal because part of me wants it and part of me doesn't. But in the end, I don't see any source of income for development for this town. We're not building new houses, we have no other source of income, we defray our taxes. And as these needs that you're talking about, the teacher's school, the public works, and whatnot, have to be paid for, our taxes are going to continue to rise and it will keep the prices of our homes down.
Good evening. I'm Fred Anderson, someone who may know me, and 87th Center Road. I'm looking at the process, and the actual process is what concerns me. I work for another town as a professional municipal land use planner. And most parts, applications for new construction start with me. And I don't pass them on to Planning and Zoning or the Conservation slash, I don't know what they're going to be until they're clear enough, to me anyway, that what I'm approving is actually something that's going to happen. To me, this whole process tonight seems like there's too many variables to really vote positively. We don't really know how many structures there will be, we aren't really sure whether the septic, whether roast needs to be rebuilt, whether the sewer system needs to be upgraded, whether there isn't a better configuration. Have all of these been discussed further, or is this just something that Toll has decided this is what is best for them? So from my standpoint, it's not clear enough that I would pass it on. Thank you.
That's a really good question, if I can answer for you. Basically, this process is not the zoning process at all. This process is dictated by your charter, which requires that any sale of town land, any purchase by the town of land, any lease of the town's land over certain monitoring amounts, has to come to the people first. So it's conceptual. The issue before you is the sale of 17 acres for the stated price. That's the specific question, the town. Now, all the other questions that are, we're trying to answer is to help you try to make a decision. But once the town says, "Yes, we're going to empower the Board of Selectmen to proceed with the negotiation for a purchase or sale project at this acre for that price," then the details of the contract has to be hammered out and ultimately approved by the Board of Selectmen. And then at that point, Toll Brothers has to pick up an application and proceed to all the boards and commissions, like anyone else would have to do, changing the town plan development, going to the town plan development, to come in with whatever district they think is going to work, and all that, back and forth with those agencies at that point. So those are good questions. But it's not like that design is a final design by anything, it's a conceptual design.
Well, how conceptual, how much flexibility is there in the concept that Toll Brothers would accept?
It's like any proposal that comes before, I mean, there's concepts that change. The issue before you is the sale of a specific acreage for a specific price, and that this would be the use that we would be looking to impose on them, which would be an age-restricted community for 54. It's now, again, if they come to Planning and Zoning and say, "If we redesign it and we think 55 is the number, or the road is different," that's for Planning and Zoning and for the process of the agencies that are best able to look through that and deal with that.
But as you mentioned before, it seems like there is the pressure on those two stage and teams.
No, not at all. They are independent, they've always been independent. Toll Brothers has the right not to proceed like any developer would. I mean, what makes this difficult for all parties involved, in a typical land transaction between private parties, they'd be able to sign an option to purchase or a contract to purchase that has a contingency, which is, if I do not get the approvals that I believe as the developer I need, I don't have to buy it. Normally, that's what happens sometimes, okay? Here, the town's the owner, so before they can take one step further, they have to get the approval of the town to authorize the sale. You can't expect any developer, whether it's Toll Brothers or anyone, to go ahead and make a financial investment to do the engineering, the diligence, the environmental reports. Everything else that has to happen is the traffic reports, to employ folks to deal with the zoning aspects and the well events. That's an expensive proposal for any government. They're not going to do that unless they know they can have a contract with the owner of the town to sell, and it's going to be contingent on them getting all their approval. So that's what makes this, impart this process of, well, this is what's being proposed, but the details of which all have to be worked out through the normal process after that.
So we're just totally dependent on your decision?
No, it's your decision. It's your decision whether you want to sell it, and it's all your decision.
My name is Paul Gerik, and I'm with your own group. What would the impact if we could do anything with this state-of-the-art service on average to each taxpayer or to each household? Yeah, it's roughly a half a mil. What was the revenue we got from the golf course on a full year basis? You mean the last few years? Yes. We received $115,000 in 2009, and approximately $240,000 in 2010, and this year we received about $50,000. So 2010 was the only full year that we had revenue? So if you offset the revenue that we got from the golf course versus the debt service, what would be the net impact for the average household? Well, on a short-term basis, there was no impact because the amount we paid in short-term interest was less than what we'd be if we received. Our current contract is up December 31st. If we had the same, if we had the debt service that you project, and we had the revenue that we had in 2010, what would be the impact for a household on average? I would have to figure that out, but it would be the difference between the debt service, which is about $500,000, $600,000. Less than $240,000. Correct. Somewhere around $250,000 to $300,000 per year? Possible. So what would that, on average, impact each household? There's about 3,000 households in Woodbridge? Yeah, I would have to, I want to get an accurate figure for you. I mean, I don't want to... What I'm getting at... I'm not sure what your point is. Well, my point is this, all the differences have been spaded, all the questions that have been asked, it seems that the dialogue with the Board of Selectmen does not get genuine. It seems like you guys are really trying to sell this deal very hard without being objective about it. You know, when the question came up about what the Toll Brothers sell their other units for, the one in Prospect and the one in Bethel, you know, it's over $100,000 less than what we're projecting. The number of units went from 58. If you look at the setbacks along Woodfield Road, it's unlikely you're going to get 54 units. If you look at the impact on the tennis courts, it's unlikely you're going to get 54 units. And if you were more objective about it, you can see that the tax revenue that's projected is not really realistic when you take into account the number of units that are likely actually to be built, the value of those units. It just hasn't been a genuine discussion. It seems like the Board of Selectmen has been trying to sell us this Toll Brothers proposal, and it's just, it's just not a balanced approach. And I'm not for it. And I'm not for it just for those reasons. I'm not for it because I don't think climate change is wrong in Woodbridge. And I respect what some people have said about the impact with this proposal would be on our taxes. But frankly, for my investment in Woodbridge, $100 per year, or the decrease or less appeal of my property to a potential buyer is much greater than $100 per year. And for that reason, I'm against it. I just, people move to Woodbridge because there's a rural character, there's a rural appeal to the town. And to build high-density housing like this in the town, you know, Orange went down this road, and how many high-density housing developments does Orange have now? It's a slippery slope. And this is the first one, and as soon as we do this, we're going to have one in two years, another in two years, another in two years, and we're going to be like Orange where we have five percent. And Orange has not stopped yet. It's a slippery slope, and I'm against it for that reason also.
Steve Worth, Hunter Bridge. My question is this, am I clear, and I clearly understand that two tennis courts will get wiped out with this proposal? There'll be two less tennis courts. Which is about $250,000 to pay. And that's the cost. Am I correct? That's part of the current total picture of the golf course, and $250,000 of it is going to go by. Am I correct? I don't know about the $250,000, but there'll be two less tennis courts, there'll be four. To build those, it would cost about $200,000, maybe $200,000. Yeah, I can tell you because I know. And that's the cost, and that's part of the golf course. So this has got some other costs that seem to have faded away to the bottom.
I am Robert Stern. I'm in the 59 Old Barnwell Street. I've lived in Woodbridge for 38 years. I am strongly opposed to the proposal. I resent that the Board of Selectmen appear to give the impression of being a board of salesmen, working for Toll Brothers. The process has been shifting. We had a meeting in which a lot of talk was about the golf authority. I believe that was on Tuesday, the 8th of November. And at that, at that meeting, it was proposed that a piece of paper be sent out summarizing all the citizens as to what's going on. On Thursday of that week, or Friday, two or three days later, we got a letter from Mr. Sheedy. It was dated November 7th. It was dated one day before... It was dated one day before the meeting took place, where the discussion was on the golf authority. But in that letter, that was dated November 7th, that was very clearly written after November 8th, the expression "golf authority" didn't appear. It was changed to a committee or to a commission. The nature of Woodbridge is my family homes. That's why we move here. And for the town to compare it to Longwood is just not genuine. I think we need to compare it to Fairfield or to Wilton. It is an asymmetrical arrangement to have a contract between a town like Woodbridge and an outfit like Toll Brothers. They have their representative told us $2 billion in cash. Woodbridge does not have $2 billion in cash. And if any problems arose between these two entities, Woodbridge doesn't have the finances to deal with Toll Brothers. I'm going to finish with two items that I took off the internet, and I'd like you to let the board of selection consider it. Toll Brothers Incorporated, the largest U.S. luxury home builder, agreed to pay $25 million dollars to settle a lawsuit that alleged the company misled investors about its ability to validate the slump in the housing market. The city of Hialeah employees retirement system in Florida sued in April 2007, claiming directors misrepresented demand for toll new homes in fiscal year 2005 and gross projections for 2006. The later-mentioned trust fund for Northern California joined as a co-pleaded, seeking to represent investors who bought shares from December 9, 2004, to November 8, 2005. Toll denies any wrongdoing. Toll and its board, quote, "wish to eliminate the uncertainty, risk, burden, and expense of federal litigation, and to permit the operation of the company's business without further distraction," according to settlement papers filed October 28 in U.S. District Court in Philadelphia. One other item that was published in the New York Post on March 23, 2011. Millersburg waterfront condo residents complained of shoddy construction, March 23, 2011. They were promised luxury living, only to have their green shed after buying pricey condos and a new high-rise complex on the Millersburg waterfront, that residents complained is rife with the shoddy construction. Apartment owners at Northside Piers, a 450-unit two-power complex on Kent Avenue, claim the developers Toll Brothers engaged in shoddy construction and potentially fraud before collecting cash for the units which became available four years ago, and ran from $505,000 for studios to $2.8 million for penthouses. A half dozen condo owners interviewed by the Post say their walls are leaky and poorly insulated, mold is brewing in the walls, and there is faulty plumbing, sewer heating, and air conditioning system. But the biggest issue in the project, signature feature, massive windows, many of which offer spectacular Manhattan skyline views, the grand views, the residents say, came at a steep price. The windows are thin, and the seams between the panes allow wind and rain to easily come through, residents say. Some residents have taped around window panes, but they say rain and air still flows in. I don't think that Woodbridge has the resources to deal with a company that has $2 billion in cash. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Rich Brewer, and I live at 24 Sondra Road. First thing I think that, if you all sit here and thank the board of selection and the people who spent almost three hours listening to me, thought. At one time, I was on the board of golf and in that zone, and to hear so many people coming in with so many different comments. But I like that, as a member of the conservation commission presently in the town of Woodbridge, I think this is a no-brainer. You know, people have thought that this is the way Woodbridge be. People come to Woodbridge, most of the time, is because of their school system. And if anybody thinks it's any different, and if you look, and you look at what's going to happen in this school system, we're going to have to put a lot of money out, this proposal is a no-brainer for the town of Woodbridge. Thank you.
I would just like you to answer a couple of concerns I heard. First of all, the, as far as what it's going to cost for taxes, the $200 Tony mentioned at some point is on average, obviously, Woodbridge. But as I said, there will be operational costs and capital costs. The money we receive from the operator of the golf course, we've spent just about all that money, because we are responsible for that clubhouse. He handles so much of the capital improvements, but we're responsible for the rest. So there will not be any significant income from the operation of the golf course. We're going to have to be committed to spending a lot of that to keep our property, keep up to where it's been doing. The other thing which I find very puzzling is when I hear people say, I didn't move into Woodbridge for condos. This isn't a town that should have condos. I didn't move here, I don't want to have condos. Where was everybody when these 150 units were approved on the lower, is the lower part of Woodbridge not Woodbridge? It's Woodbridge as far as I'm concerned. And it's 150 small units, these are going to be, yeah, these are going to be 150 units on 15 acres, two less acres. These are going to be very dense, they're going to be very small, and they are not going to be nearly as luxurious as you see here on these condos. These are very elegant townhouses, I've seen similar projects to this in Oxford, they are exactly what empty nesters, as Greg refers, these people want. I just have a problem with people saying, I don't want condos in this town. If that project that we've talked condos to, that's 150 condos, and believe it, that is Woodbridge.
There's no vote on it tonight, because nothing to call the vote, we ask a 7 for 13.
Ann Atton, 10 Hunters Ridge. Ann Atton, 10 Hunters Ridge. Now, I'm not a financial analyst, but I have a question about the taxes that these units are supposed to bring in. And I'm not quite sure how, what Toll Brothers is going to do, if they build the units, and then are they going to try to sell them directly, or sell them to investors, going to sell them or rent them? In any case, what, it seems to me that, not all seniors are interested in golf, so that may not be an attraction. The nearest bus stop is three miles away, the nearest shopping center is three miles away, and although a three mile walk for seniors is recommended by most geographic specialists nowadays, this is, we're talking about level walking. And I'm a runner and cyclist, and believe it, there are some serious hills between that location and the JCC, which is the closest bus stop, or the empty shopping center. And so, while this may change, initially, is this going to be attractive to seniors who may not all drive? And say, what happens if, well, they build the units, but whoever owns them, whether they're occupied or not, what if they can't pay the taxes on them?
You know, I think it conveys, my understanding, it conveys people moving in who have cars. They're going to be driving, and they're going to take their car wherever they go. They may walk as well, they may have a bicycle, I mean, you know, that's...
So when they get old enough so that they don't drive for various reasons, they're going to be like, kind of, either have to move out, or...
All, whatever happens is, we all get older, and those things are going to apply. And we work at that in everyday life, our own life experience. Some people will get ill, they won't be able to drive, they're right, and they will make whatever arrangements they have to make. But this, the market that these people are, or you can address this better than I can, is that I think they're looking for people who are moving initially who have cars. Sorry, I stepped out. The question is...
The access to a public bus service, or to say, the JCC, or recreational, there's no bus line, how would you get there? So the bottom line is, I understand, is that people will be moving in their black cars.
Well, absolutely, that's our experience. We've got several of these age restricted communities being built right now. The, what we've found from our experience as we develop these communities is, there's a great sense on the part of the residents to stay in the community and have a gathering room, clubhouse, meeting room in the community. It's a tremendous, tremendous desire on the part of the residents. So that's why, with this proposed development, we're planning to build a small meeting room slash clubhouse, where the residents can gather. So we, I guess the point of what I'm trying to say is, yes, they do like to travel, but they also like to stay onsite, gather, meet, entertain, those sorts of things. That we really find that to be a tremendous, like I said, tremendous desire on the part of the residents that we are building homes from. So we do this in every one of our age restricted communities to a certain degree.
To answer the question of, what if they can't pay, you know, the taxes aren't coming in? What's going to happen then?
There's a senior bus system here. Seniors can make a phone call and say, take me down to my doctor's, and a bus arrives.
I believe it's, isn't it restricted to certain things, like shopping, or bus, or doctor's appointments, but if you just want to go someplace that's not on the approved list?
The question is that they don't pay the taxes, that, you know, the town has the right to work forward, you know, the taxes, I mean, that...
That's true with any property owner, that if they're delinquent, if they reach a certain point of delinquency, if paying their property taxes, the town has the right to foreclose.
And if there are a significant number of units that are unoccupied, if they don't all get sold, maybe several years it might take to actually sell all the units.
It could take a few years, yes.
My name is Holden Heinz, I live at 858 Mountain Street. I want to, like Rich said earlier, applaud everyone for the spirited discussion. There's a lot to weigh, a lot of pros and cons on this. There's some discussion about the bus. I do know that the bus goes up Fountain Street, I think it's Ramsey Street right now, Ramsey Dell, right? And I know that there have been people who have been urging to get the bus to come up into Woodbridge. There is the concern that I would traffic safely, living very close to that intersection. That is a big concern of mine, and I would love to see the board of selection look more closely at this and come back with some recommendations, how to address the traffic safely. There's concerns about the environmental impact, a lot of existing sort of larger issues about COVID stays. But one of the questions I have with Toll Brothers is, I know that some of their other construction has been LEED gold certified, and a question for Toll Brothers is if there's plans to make this particularly environmentally friendly, such as with a LEED gold certification?
Well, we certainly, as a company, have talked about it. I can't tell you whether, with this particular proposal, whether we'll go there or not, but we certainly will be considering it, for sure.
Is there any last comment on this before I close? Okay, here are none. Is there any other business that come before the committee this evening? No, I just want to thank everybody for their participation and courtesy. Aaron Cooper, do I have a motion to withdraw?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you.